We'd like to welcome everyone to our Bountiful City Council meeting. Tonight, Tuesday, April 8th, and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance by Ron Mortensen.
Please stand and face the flag. And repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. What a nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Ron, and we're grateful to Darren Townsend, who will now give us our opening prayer.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful to be here tonight, thankful for the opportunity we have to be at this city council meeting. We pray that thou would please be with us and watch over this meeting and that we will be able to enjoy our time together tonight. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you so much, Darren. We now will have our public comment period. If you wish to make a comment, we'd love to hear from you. Anyone may speak and just state your name and where you live, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, Richard Watson, Bountiful. I'm just here to promote concert stuff. So next month, it's that time of year, we have Bountiful's Got Talent auditions. And I have the dates right here. I'll put the flyers on the table back there, which is May 14th, May 17th, May 21st. Final edition 25th, and then that same week, we'll have the concert in the park with the Bountiful's Got Talent. I should mention, we've had a lot of people who go through this Bountiful's Got Talent, move on to bigger and greater things. And if you don't know, we've been doing this 15 years. In the very first, very first Bountiful's Got Talent, Mayor Kendallen was a contestant. So, there you go.
It was super fun.
You can be, one day you can become mayor then. Also, so I got, this Friday, 11th, we have The Carpenters Platinum. So, we've still got a few tickets left available, so encourage to go see them. Great band, if you liked music from the 70s, this is your concert. So, we're gonna have a great year. Too bad I don't have more time to talk about our summer concerts, but maybe on a later date I can. But, great year we're gonna have. We're on top of the world, and we've only just begun. That's a Carpenters reference, by the way. Thanks.
Thank you so much for all your work. Great concerts we have at Bountiful City Park. Okay, any other public comment? We'd love to hear from anyone, two minutes.
Gary Davis, I guess all I have to say is Bountiful. Ham classes, we're starting amateur radio classes tomorrow downstairs in the basement. Starts at 6:30, 18:30 hours, 18:30. So, come on down, enjoy. We have a good time. I learned a lot about the English language from watching specialist professors in the language, such as Bud Abbott, Lou Costello, Gallagher, George Carlin. And I got to wondering, what exactly would be inactive transportation? It's not mentioned in the general plan anywhere. But if you gotta be very specific about active, shouldn't you mention inactive as well? I did a search through the plan and I couldn't find it. So, I don't know, just boot for thumb. Thank you, folks, and all the city employees for the wonderful job they're doing.
Thank you, Gary.
Hi, this is my first time doing this. I'm Kelly Barnett. I've lived in Bountiful my life, and I'm here with my friend Susan, who's also lived in Bountiful. I sent you an email about this. I don't know, we're unaware of if there's a city plan for if there were some type of an earthquake or any type of emergency, what the sanitation plan would be for if the plumbing or the underground pipes and things break and all that stuff. If there's a city plan, we're just wondering what it is and if we can help with it or if there's anything that you know that we don't know, or if there's a place we can look it up. So that's what we're wondering.
Great question, thank you. And the public comment period is a time where we can hear anything from you. But if you don't mind, I'll ask one of our staff members to get your contact information. And I appreciate the email. So, we'll circle back with you so that you can get the answer that you want. Great question.
Thank you.
Yeah. Would someone from the city staff be willing to touch bases? Thank you. Anyone else for public comment tonight that would like to say anything? Okay, seeing no one else, we will now move to consider approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held on March 25th, 2025.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes from the meeting held on March 25th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, thank you. And now we will move to council reports. And we'll start with you, Councilwoman Bradshaw. She's joining us remotely.
Thanks, Mayor. One quick report to share. As the council knows, I serve on the board for Lakeview Hospital and wanted to alert the community that Lakeview has been named to the Fortune Premier Top 100 Hospital list again. This is a national list, so they're ranking the top 100 hospitals nationally. And Lakeview made the list and has made the list the last several years in the small community hospital category. So it's quite an honor for our local community hospital to be ranked of and thought so highly on so many healthcare metrics. I know many of us have received care there and will receive care there, and it's an important part of our community. And so just wanted to acknowledge that nice honor that they've received and reflects so much of the great work that the hospital is doing in our community and that all of the healthcare providers in our community who utilize that facility, whether they're doing surgeries or referring patients there. It's an important part of our community network. And so, great to see that they're being nationally recognized for the good work they're doing. And that's my report for tonight.
Excellent, thank you so much. That's great, yeah, I feel lucky. I've had some time at Lakeview Hospital, and we're so lucky to have them right here in our neighborhood, in our city. Councilman Murray, do you have a report tonight?
Nothing to report on tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Price Hewish.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, thank you, Mayor. I have, well, I don't want to steal the thunder of our BCYC representative who's here and who's gonna give a full report on the youth council, but I do want to just give a huge shout out and a promotion for the bunny hop that is being sponsored by the BCYC at Town Square this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. I also just wanted to briefly mention that at the Bountiful Davis Arts Center, the DSD, Davis School District Student Art Show is currently on. And that is really, or it's starting on the 10th, which is Thursday. And that is a really fun opportunity to see a lot of talented youth who live right here in our community. I feel like if you go and see this, it will really inspire you about this incredible generation of youth, and you'll probably even recognize some names maybe from your neighborhood. So that is happening, and that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have a report tonight, Councilwoman Child?
Thanks, Mayor. I was going to promote the concert and the ham radio. So, that's already been done tonight. But we sure appreciate the volunteers in the community that add so much community talent and unity in our community through what you offer. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will, I will let Councilwoman Price Hewish introduce our youth council representative.
Thank you, Mayor. It is really a privilege to introduce Joey Christensen, who serves on the Bountiful City Youth Council. He's one of our officers. And kind of a fun thing you may not know about the Bountiful City Youth Council is they do a lot of service. And we just added up all the service hours that the youth council have done in the last year, and it's well over 850 hours. And so they're really making a positive impact in our community. And Joey is always there, and he's a lot of fun. I'm gonna say this, I spent a couple days with him recently at a leadership retreat. And he does every meeting an ethical controversy. So he brings up something that is relevant in the legislature or happening out in the world, and the kids discuss it, and they have these very meaningful and civil dialogues. And it's a great example about how to talk about things that are, you know, maybe might have differing viewpoints. So I appreciate his thoughtfulness for always doing that. I also just want to say Joey attends New Ames High School. He was recently named the student of the month. He's participated in mock trial and, or student of the term. It's not student of the month, student of the term. And he's going to be graduating with his associates and going on to the University of Utah, where he plans to study criminology and maybe pre-law. So, anyway, thank you, Joey, for being here and giving us, and just for all of your many years of service on BCYC.
Thank you for your introduction. As you said, I'm Joey, I'm an officer on the Bountiful U. City Council. I don't believe we've had someone give a report since the start of February, so I'll just go over quickly what we've done since then. In mid-February, about the 18th, right after our meeting, we had food pantry volunteers that we spent an hour with several of our members, and we went down to the food pantry to offer service there. And then, as Cecily mentioned, we had a, up at Utah State University, there was a leadership conference, which a few of our members were able to sign up for and go to. They had breakout sessions and very good cornerstone speakers who offered very good skills for success and for becoming a better leader in the future. That was impactful for me and for, I'd say, all the other members who went with us. And as Cecily has also mentioned, we have our big bunny hop coming up soon. Just mid-March, we filled up about 3,500 plastic eggs for the kids. And the past two weeks, we've had meetings where we've been planning and refleshing some ideas to improve from feedback that we got for the last year's bunny hop, so we can have an even better one this year. And so we've made posters and we're preparing to make it an even better time for the families and kids who show up. A few plans we have for our future, we've already sent out the signups for next year's school year for the U. City Council. And to help with that, we're having our big end of the year blast off to get current and incoming high schoolers with our Stomp on Main, which is basically just a high school dance for all the high schoolers in the city. And that should also be really fun when we plan that out as well. And that's all that we've been planning so far. I thank you for your time, and if there's any questions or anything curious, I guess I'm here to answer those as well.
Thank you, Joey. Thank you so much for all the service that you have given, and thanks for being here tonight to report.
Thank you. Hope you guys have a good afternoon.
Thanks, yeah. I failed to mention that I'm on the South Davis Fire District Board, and they put out their annual report. And it's a really impressive report of the Fire District and what they're, what they've accomplished over the past year. And so, anyway, these are available to the public if anyone's interested in looking it over. And it's a great, it's an awesome organization. They're such a good team there. I also just wanted to mention that we, that we recognize that our Councilman Higginson is excused, and he is recovering from some health issues. But we expect that he'll be able to join us again soon, and so we look forward to that. Moving now to consider approval of the February 2025 financial report.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the February 2025 financial report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now I am so excited for this next item. We're so grateful that Lana Richardson is here. And my goodness, 43 years of service at Bountiful City. And so Lana, we are so grateful that you're here. You have some of your family with you, that's wonderful. And I'd like to invite Aaron, our prosecutor. Are you going first?
Sure.
Okay, would you come up to the mic and talk about Lana and her contributions here at Bountiful City?
Well, Mayor, I feel kind of awkward talking about her while she's behind me. So can we bring her up here?
Absolutely. Do you mind coming up, Lana? We want to be able to see you when we're talking about you.
Come over with your hand.
No, no, up there, so everybody can see you.
Please come and join us, yes. Okay, let's hear about her, let's hear about Lana.
Okay. Well, it does say Lana Richardson on all of the paperwork, but Lana's been remarried and her last name now is Abaco. Okay? Lana has started working here in 1982, and she started working in the redevelopment department. And her first project was the redevelopment of Main Street. So she started on that. She had to deal and help with that big flood in 1983. And she stayed in the redevelopment department for six years. Then she got moved into the legal department, and she stayed here since then. I guess I should jump back. When Lana started here in 1982, she obviously needed a job. She was a single mom, had three kids under the age of 10 at the time. So, she worked, she raised a family, and did all of that together. She's helped out in almost every department here. She's worked to help cover when people go on vacation or we have an empty position. She's worked in code enforcement for the legal secretaries, for the city manager, for the city recorder, and she's just helped out and done almost everything you can think of. It's a job that we have around here in the office. During all that time, she's seen a lot of people come and go. So, her first job with redevelopment, she's been here with two redevelopment directors. She's now been here with eight different prosecutors, four different city attorneys, and two different city managers. So, she's been great, she's outlasted all of us. Lana, there's a lot for me. She, I feel like protects me. The public's always calling, and I'm trying to get work done, go in court. And she covered so much of the stuff that comes in and gets it done and settles things, resolves complaints or issues that citizens may have. So she's always done that, and I just really appreciate that about her. About a week ago or two weeks ago, when we were talking, she made a comment about how when she leaves, that she's still gonna be considering me a friend and still communicate with me. And that actually meant a really lot to me because I dearly enjoy talking to Lana. We've done a lot of things together. We've gone to concerts, we've done yard sales, we've done different things. So I'm very, really miss her, but I do hope that we get to keep in touch. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, you just stay there for a minute if you would. Colette, did you have a few words to say?
I do.
Okay, and if you want, I want you to speak into the microphone so people online can hear as well, but you want to present her with those? Oh, that's beautiful.
Lana, just want to let you know what an incredible asset you have been to the city, to the employees here. Your knowledge, your dedication, your loyalty is bar none. You started as a single mom, and you persevered, and it will not be the same without you. We love you. I've worked with you just not even a year and a half now, and I can see the love that people have for you, the respect that you have earned because of your hard work and dedication. So, we just want you to know how much you are loved and appreciated and want you to have the best time in retirement. Thank you.
All right, I'm last, and I'm actually not here to thank Lana, but I am gonna thank Lana. She's been great. We posted her job, and I went to a conference, and I had people I didn't even know come up and say, "Oh, Lana's retiring, Lana's retiring." I would say that she's one of the people behind the scenes that made the prosecutor's office work for the last 40 years, but it's not true. I mean, she is, she is the person in front that has run it all by herself as different attorneys have come through. As Aaron, I, and Colette, as we came in, she wanted to retire, and she didn't. She waited a whole year. And 43 years, I looked up what happened in 1982, and it said that Israel invaded Lebanon. And I was like, "That's not even that long ago, that feels like that was recently." But in reality, I mean, I was born, Thriller was the, was the number one album. E.T. was the number one movie. Lana, you have been, you have been Bountiful. She embodies what our employees should be, and we're very sad to see her go. But I have a present for her husband. Thank you for letting her stay for one more year. It meant a lot to me, it meant a lot to Aaron, it meant a lot to Colette, as we were all new. So we have a present for you.
Thank you. I have a certificate here, certificate of recognition presented to Lana by the Mayor and City Council of Bountiful in heartfelt recognition of your exceptional dedication and service to the city of Bountiful for over 43 years. Your unwavering commitment, tireless work ethic, and positive influence have greatly enriched our community, and your contributions will continue to resonate for years to come. Your presence has made Bountiful a better place. Thank you for your many years of service, and we wish you the very best in your future. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words? Okay.
Bountiful will always be my home. It doesn't matter where I live, but Bountiful will always be my home. I could have been Bountiful, and my parents lived here for 68 years. And I am so grateful to Bountiful for the job that I've had and the many friends that I've had here. And I don't mean to get fearful, but I do. But thank you again for all of you. Appreciate this.
Yeah, we're hoping we can get a picture. Yes, would you mind? I think it's a little ironic that she, you know, talks a little about her experience and cries for a minute and says, "Oh, I'm sorry, I'm crying." And I'm thinking, if only every employee cared as much as Lana cared, then, you know, that's why, that's why she's crying, is because she cares. And so, thank you for giving all that you have to Bountiful City. We really appreciate you. Thank you so much. And we understand if you need to go, but you're welcome to stay. So, thank you for being here tonight. Okay. Thank you so much, Lana, thank you so much, all of you, yes. Okay, we would, we'll now move to item number eight on the agenda to consider approval of the 135 South Main Street remodel project. We'll turn the time over to Lloyd.
Thanks, Mayor. Hang on for just a second while we try and do the computer shuffle here. I hope that you'll have a little, a little bit of entertainment as we talk about this project. It certainly has been fun for my group to work on this. We're gonna get to the slideshow here or not, I'm not sure. Well, we may just have to go this way. You know, back in October, City Creek Construction was awarded the CMGC contract to remodel 135 South Main with the idea that it would turn into a restaurant. At that time, we didn't know who the tenant would be. But as I thought about this presentation for today and some of the work that's gone into this, I thought it might be good for just a minute to think about the big picture. And hopefully the big picture's gonna show up here. But as you think about all the activities that have gone on Main Street in the last few years, there certainly are several. I don't know why we're not getting this. But if you think of the Brooks, the townhomes and the commercial development up there on the north end, we have Nolton's projects on Fourth South and Main Street with two big apartment buildings and some commercial space. We also have City Creek's very own projects for their offices and for the townhomes that they build. That's pretty exciting. All of those are really complementary to the big picture, though. And the big picture was to revitalize downtown, right? And that's why the city spent several million dollars on the Town Square project. One of the elements of saving downtown was to bring in things that would bring people downtown. And important to that was restaurant space. So, the opportunity to work on this project has had some history, and hopefully it has a great future. I wish you could see the screen a little better. Not sure why we can't. If you look at the third slide down over on the left... If you look at the third slide down over on the left, you can see some really rough pictures of, well, they're small, they're rough because they're small, of that old interior space of DeBoer's shoes. And I think we have a really exciting change in store for the face of this building. In your packet, I've included the, what's called the estimate summary of expenses. And before we get too far into the building, I want to clarify some of the amounts that are listed in the staff report and also in City Creek's estimate summary. So, in the staff report, we note that the expense, the expected expense for construction is going to be $1,508,000. That is, that number is slightly different from the figures that we presented in October for City Creek's CMGC fees. Those fees totaled for a six-month construction period about $304,000. The reason why there's a little bit of difference in what I've listed here is that City Creek's fees are split into two pieces. So, each contractor who proposed on the project submitted two components to their bid. The first component was their profit on the project. And so, the $85,000 that you see in City Creek's estimate summary represents 6% of the construction cost that's listed as $1,423,000. Yeah, in the line above. So, that's their profit. What this total does not include though is the monthly charge of about $27,000 for their office staff, for their overhead needs, for them to manage the project. So, that's how you come up with the total of the 300-plus thousand dollars for City Creek's fees. We've only included the 6% component on that because that is based on the construction costs in here. Another thing I'd like to point out in this estimate is if you go up to line 26 where it says electrical, the very next line down is contingency. And you can see we've included $136,000 for contingencies. Working on an old building is kind of like opening up Pandora's Box. We felt like we have done a really thorough job of investigating the type of construction, how that building is put together, what it's going to take to change it into a restaurant space. But we wanted to have a significant amount of contingency money available in case we find something that we have to deal with as we turn this into a restaurant. So, we don't anticipate, we don't go into the project expecting to spend that amount, but we will hold that in reserve in case we need it. In my staff report, I made a comment about there's still some outstanding fees that need to be paid, like impact fees for an upsize to the culinary water lateral or an impact fee to the sewer district because we're adding more fixture units and a type of facility, they will charge more for that. We don't have an exact number on those yet, but those will have to be incorporated into the project cost ultimately. And, you know, that contingency money can absorb some of those costs in the overall scope of the project. So, we wanted to go in with the idea that we had enough money allocated in the budget to cover this and we wouldn't have to come back for a supplemental request to the council. Now, that brings up a related issue. The RDA has funded the purchase of the building. The reconstruction cost is anticipated to be paid out of the RDA operating funds. But yet, here we are in city council meeting, asking for your approval of these contracts. There is a little bit of a disconnect there. Even though you do function as the RDA, you are not the RDA at this moment. So, as staff, we're going to bring back an RDA agenda to go back through and re-approve or ratify all the previous contracts and the expenses for the project. So, it will be all above board, it will all be approved by the RDA, it will all be sanctioned by the council. So, it'll be, we hope to keep everybody in calm waters instead of rough waters. Dang it, I wish, I wish we could get to some better pictures. If you look down towards the bottom, you'll see the facade. And I can email these out to you later. I did want to have kind of a show-and-tell component for a moment. So, this product that I've handed to Councilman Murray, the first one is going to be the siding that will go up on the face, on the Main Street face. And that really thin fiberglass piece you have there is going to go down at the bottom on the front. So, it'll look like the old stone foundations. And then if we really want to have some fun, we'll pass this sample around. That's the brick that's been chosen for the front sides of the building. See if Gary can work some magic here. We are really excited with what this is going to do downtown. There are three parking spaces that we are proposing to... There we go. How about that? Man, I owe you some chocolate milk. Okay, now we're talking. We think this is a pretty good look. There's going to be a narrow canopy that protrudes from the front, kind of reminiscent to the canopy that's there now, except, you know, much more, much cleaner and more modern look to it. Board and batten siding here on the front around the storefront elements and the windows. So, lots of visibility into the restaurant. We're going to take off that top piece where those existing windows are and go back to the old roof. That's going to change the look of that probably the most. I want to talk about the site for just a minute. If you look over here on the left, you can see this area that's kind of shaded. One of the elements that we thought was really important downtown would be to have some on-street dining. So, we're going to reclaim three parking spots out there and turn it into dining in front of the restaurant. I think that'll be very complementary to what's already there and hope to bolster some business for our tenant. In the back, we hope to do a little bit of the same. We have some challenges in the back with the elevation of the building versus the parking lot. The actual finished floor of the basement is down about a foot. So, we need to transition from the parking lot down to that space and we need to have a place to accommodate deliveries and have a little bit of, a little bit better access there. So, you can see this yellow, yeah, this yellow rectangle. We're going to disturb that area and create a new patio back there that will also have a delivery ramp over here on the left-hand side, some seating area. And I'm going to go to this next slide because I think it will be most descriptive. You can see the seating element. Lucky Slice is excited to have a service window back here for walk-up traffic. So, hopefully you'll be able to call in if you're over at the Town Square and you're smelling some really good pizza, you can phone one in and then go pick it up. And if there's an empty seat, maybe you can enjoy it right there on-site. We really like this covered entry into the back. This will lead right into the dining room. It's going to be really, really sweet. I'm going to go back to the floor plan because this is important too. Here's your kitchen space. This is the Main Street side at the bottom. This is the patio side at the top. Right now, that stairway goes down in this corner. And so, we're going to totally remove that stairway and relocate it to this location in the building and put in two new bathrooms. And that will be part of this construction package, is that the city will provide the shell. It will have the bathrooms, the stairway and all the structural elements for the building and the HVAC equipment. But the tenant, Lucky Slice, will bring in all of the seating, all the countertop spaces, all of their equipment. And so, that's what's represented here. I think one of the things that's really fortunate about the project is that Lucky Slice has entered into contracts with Design West as the architect and it's City Creek as the contractor to bring together the whole job into one package. So, we don't have to manage a whole nother team coming into the building to finish things up. We think this will be much more efficient and should put Lucky Slice in business late third quarter, early fourth quarter this year is the hope. I'd be happy to explain any question, you know, answer any questions you have about the project or about the financing.
Counsel, what questions do you have?
I've got a question here. What will the seating capacity be? Do we know that yet?
I think it's in the neighborhood of about thirty. Thirty to forty.
I really like the design, by the way.
What other questions do we have, Counsel?
On the slanted parking, reclaiming the three spots, would that option be open to any other tenants on that street?
I think it would be a consideration. I think we'd have to look at it case by case.
Is there a rendering of that, of what that would look like?
Space out front?
The presentation in the front?
There's not.
Do you anticipate, like, in the summer, there'll be umbrellas and seating out there? And, you know, some places where you see this, it's kind of blocked off by a little half fence kind of a thing? I'm just...
Those elements would be provided by Lucky Slice. So, we don't have, we haven't made any provisions to furnish seating or furniture or fixtures or anything like that.
But these three spots would be year-round? The removal of these three parking spots?
Yeah, it would be permanent. It would just be expanded sidewalk.
Uh-huh, thanks.
Any other questions?
I'm excited for the single slice option.
Lloyd, thanks for your work on this. You know, it's been a long time coming. We've been talking about this and I think that with Blacksmith Ice Cream across the street being so busy on a Friday and Saturday night, even late into the night, but nothing else around it, it's just needed. I think that residents in our city will really appreciate this addition. So, I really appreciate your work on this. Anything else from Counsel?
I guess I just want to kind of clarify one thing, going back to those potential additional expenses for incurred impact fees or utility services. We rely so often on the expertise of staff and as city engineer, you are often called into duty to give us the engineering estimate and we... So, as our, would you say that the engineering estimate does? I mean, I know they're, like you said, they're unforeseeing things, but we've been kind of, you know, in the space now for a while. You know, there's been work at the property and I think you probably have a really good, you know, grip on what's happening there. Do you feel fairly confident as the engineer and giving the estimate that, you know, we're not going to see more things coming down the pike?
I don't think so. The magnitude of impact fees is going to be, you know, not insignificant, but not, certainly not a deal breaker. For the water department, it's a few thousand dollars. I would expect for South Davis Sewer, that's going to be on the order of a few thousand dollars, you know, like, under ten. The repair costs for going under the concrete in Main Street to upsize the water line is going to be probably more expensive than what the impact fees themselves will be. I don't have an estimate on what in-bridge is going to cost to upsize the gas meter yet. That one, that one may be significant and may be tens of thousands. I don't know yet. But I think we have plenty of money. That's why we chose that number. We wanted to come once.
Thank you. I also appreciate that you laid out kind of the RDA component of this, that these are RDA funds. The whole purpose of those are to, you know, refurbish, make our city better, you know, look at areas that need revitalization. And thank you for giving kind of a historical aspect, even though we couldn't see, I could tell you had a map of different pockets around that have been revitalized in that area.
I'll bore you with the picture.
Oh, there we go. Okay, the big picture, I love that, the big picture. So, when do we anticipate that the RDA has, you know, we are in the RDA, those of us here and on the council, when do you anticipate this will then be coming to the RDA for that proper final?
Our plan is to, in two weeks, to schedule this for the, for RDA's ratification of all the council actions.
It won't have a different presentation or anything.
That's helpful, thank you, yeah. Anything else? Are we ready for a motion?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion. Sorry, I need to put on my readers. That we consider, no, that we approve the 135 South Main Street remodel at the guaranteed maximum price with City Creek for $1,508,641.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Bradshaw. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes? Yes.
Can I take just a minute to embarrass you?
Oh, sure.
For the benefit of those who are listening and may not know, this project really wouldn't have happened without the mayor's personal efforts. She was the one who recognized that DeBoer's was going out of business, stopped, turned her car around, went and talked to Mr. DeBoer. She's the one who also helped us find the people who got us in contact with Lucky Slice. And so, this, there are a lot of people who have done a lot of work on this, but the mayor's one of the last people to pat herself on the back. So, I thought I would do that. It's, this is a, this is a great culmination of a lot of personal effort on your part, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I'm really... Thank you so much. I'm really excited. Thanks. And yeah, I appreciate all of your help along the way. And I, I just really, truly believe that with the frontage on Main Street and with the backing town square, it's just a really unique spot that will help with economic development downtown. So thank you. All of, all of you have done a lot of work on this and I really appreciate it. And I think our residents will enjoy it. I think it will be an asset. So thanks so much. Okay, we'll move to the next item. It's also yours, our city engineer Lloyd Chini to consider approval of a traffic signal maintenance project.
Thanks, Mayor. Every year, the street department budgets funds for traffic signal maintenance work. It's kind of a joint effort between streets, engineering and, and the power department to, to get some of these things done. This year, we have a couple of larger projects at Page's Lane and 200 West and Orchard Drive and 2200 South. Those two signals are still running on the original controller and cabinet. They're thirty-plus years old. If you put that into terms with the IT department, you know, it'd be like them having an abacus. And so it's, it's time to, to upgrade those. And we have funds in the budget to do that. We're very fortunate that we can purchase materials through UDOT at state contract prices. So we don't have to go out and negotiate for those again. We can just piggyback onto their good work. And you can see from the staff report that the labor makes up only about, well, less than half of the project cost. But when you consider these projects collectively, they're more than twenty thousand dollars apiece. And so in order to keep things above board, we wanted to come and get your approval for this work. We do have funds allocated in the street department budget in the current year. We'd like to spend that money and, and get this upgrade work taken care of, particularly if we can do it before we suffer any undue or adverse impacts from material cost increases. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Thanks for that. Any questions on this?
May I make a motion to approve the traffic signal maintenance projects and the total amount as stated?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. That motion passes. And now we'll move to the next item, item number 10, also Mr. Chini.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the very first projects I worked on as a young engineer here for the city was the construction of a new wellhouse at the Viewmont Well. And that was in 1998. Doesn't seem like all that long ago to me. But since that time, a lot of things have happened in that well. We have had a previous rehabilitation project on there to address the production of sand. When you pump water out of a well, the water typically comes out of lenses or, you know, formations that are water-bearing. And if you get a really good one, it may come at a low velocity, you know, where, where you have a big area and a lot of water can come in. There may be places in, in the strata as you go down the well where you can get a lot of water, but it comes in a very confined area. And so the velocity that it enters into the well to be pumped is very high. And those are trouble spots because if you have any movement of the material in the ground around the well, it starts to move particles. And, and so a lot of times it will pick up sand or it will make sand move. And that's what's happened in our well is that the sand has started to move and it's actually eroded the screens down in the well. So that's produced a bigger hole, which now introduces more sand. So there's not a lot of ways to address that other than to take your well apart, do some very expensive work on it. That's a long ways down in the ground and put it back together. So this is essentially the same project that we did at the Calderwell recently. We had a pretty good handle on what the cost would be. Very fortunate to have Whitterson Well Services provide a proposal for this work. They were the ones who completed the Calderwell project. They did a great job. They, and they were great to work with. So we, we feel very fortunate that they have proposed to do this project for us too. The Viewmont Well is really important to us. And when it isn't running, it can complicate life at the water department because we, we need water, diverse water sources in our system. You remember that a few years ago, we had a radionuclide problem where we had to blend water in order to have it, you know, meet, meet the regulations. Sometimes we do that with Weber Basin water. Sometimes we do that with water from other wells. By having the Viewmont Well running, we can use our Weber Basin water for other needs in the system at other times of the year. And so this is really important to us to, to get this well back in service. Be happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Thanks. Council members?
Mayor, if I may, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I really appreciate the diversity of water sources that we have here in the city. And it is good to have all of these different resources at our, at our disposal. I did want to ask, and maybe you had mentioned this, but with Whitterson, do we know if they have all of the inventory that they need to do the project? And what is the timeframe for moving this forward to completion?
We haven't had that conversation with them yet. Based on their track record, I think for the Calderwell, they were able to procure materials fairly readily. These aren't, these aren't really rare things. They are available. Probably the hardest component to get is actually the gravel itself. It has to come from Texas usually, so it gets trucked up and that takes a minute. And you don't want to order too much too. Trust me, it's expensive. Really expensive sand for your playbox. But they have been able in the past to procure it reasonably fast.
So how long do you think this will take once they begin?
We don't have money allocated for this to start until after July 1. So they do have time to, a little bit of lead time to gather things up. Actual construction time. Craig, maybe you can give me an assist. I think at Calder, they were there about four months, something like that. Yeah, Calder was a very complicated project because the well is really hard to get to. Viewmont's wide open, be much easier for them. Lots of room to lay down materials and stuff too. Well work is uncertain in some terms because you don't know how long it's going to take to do the development process. It could take a long time. You may have to pump for a few hours. You may have to pump for a few days. It just depends on how that well reacts, how it'll depend on their ability to get that gravel pack worked into the nooks and crannies where it needs to go to be effective. And that takes time. There, most of these guys have a, you know, they have a pretty good feel for it. But it's just that, it's, it's kind of a guess. So four months, I think, is, is reasonable. But, you know, it could take a little longer. Maybe it goes a little shorter.
Are there any risks that you see associated with having this well shut down for four months or all the other capacity you feel like will be able to meet the needs?
It's kind of been offline for the last little while. So I think the water department's geared up and knows how to operate the system until it's back online. We're not concerned, particularly this year, we expect a good water year. So we should be in good shape. This is a good year to do it.
Any other questions from counsel? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move that we approve the bid from Whitterson Well Services for the Viewmont Well Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $702,670.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And now item 11, also Mr. Chini.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last few weeks, we've brought several contracts to you for extensions. And, and tonight we have a request to extend the contract for Ridge Rock Construction, Ridge Rock Inc., who's been our contractor for several storm drain projects last year. They have been a really good contractor. We have had a great experience working for them, working with them. It was a little unusual that they came to us and said, do you have more work? Because we would really like to work for you again. And that made us take a look into the contract. We usually include an extension clause in our utility contracts. So the, for opportunities like this. For whatever reason, we didn't have it in the, in the last contract with Ridge Rock. But we do think it's an, it's an appropriate request. And it comes with the added benefit that they're willing to hold their prices from last year. So that's, that's an offer that's almost too good to pass up. We had a bid opening today for some overlay work. They actually bid on that work also. They weren't the low bid, unfortunately. But the owner of the company stayed behind after all the other contractors left. And he asked me, the storm drain extension is going to the council tonight, right? I said, yeah, it is. And he said, do you think it'll, you think it'll be okay? Yeah, I think it will. He said, that's good because we just love working here in, in Bountiful. We just had a really great experience. And so I'm, I'm thrilled to have them back. And I would, I would request that the council extend their contract for the upcoming year. We have several projects that we can put them on. And we have funding in the storm drain capital budget to fund them. So it's like the best of both worlds.
Any questions?
No, I motion to approve the extension of the 2024 Storm Drain Project with Rock Ridge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you so much.
You.
And now we will, I'll entertain a motion to move to a closed session.
Mayor, I move that we move to a closed session to discuss the acquisition or sale of real property pending litigation and/or to discuss the character and/or competency of an individual.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. And now we'll move to a roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Bradshaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Councilmember Price Hewish?
Aye.
We are adjourned to a closed session. Thank you.